Well, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the One Gov Review Panel Public Hearing with the Chief Minister and Chief Executive. This is a scrutiny review panel and obviously all normal scrutiny rules and functions apply under normal hearing. We are of course meeting remotely. So a reminder to members of the public, you can watch this live now and will be made available after the meeting has concluded. This obviously will be transcribed as well, which is for our records as we continue our work. And as for all members, we're all used to this now, but we have to say it that if anybody wants to interject, please indicate by using the virtual hand signal and chatting to us via the virtual chat. We have only got an hour and we will talk about how we want to deal with that in a moment. But let's just do as we normally do, introduce ourselves first on the scrutiny panel side. So I am of course Deputy Kevin Pamplin. I am now the new Chair of this review panel.
I'm Sarah Ferguson, a member of the panel.
Deputy Kirsty Morrell, member of the panel.
Senator Christina Moore, member of the panel.
Deputy Steve Lyer, member of the panel.
Deputy Robert Wall, member of the panel.
Chief Minister, it's you.
Okay, thanks. Senator Jonathan Fandre, Chief Minister.
Deputy Scott Wickenden, Assistant Chief Minister.
Charlie Parker, Chief Executive.
Catherine Martin, Chief of Staff.
Julian Blaisby, Director General, Justice and Home Affairs.
Mark Grimley, Group Director of People and Corporate Services.
Denise Drew, Team Jersey.
John Quinn, Chief Operating Officer.
Andy Bell, Team Jersey.
I think that's it, although I'm not too sure if we've got Steve Mayer online as well or not. No, okay. Hopefully that's everybody.
Very sorry, thank you, Chief Minister. So it reminds us everybody to remain on mute and obviously you're all collectively together there, so I'm sure you're all aware of all this feedback and putting yourselves on mute.
Kevin, Kevin, apologies, can you see a picture of me or not?
I'm afraid not, Chief Minister. We can't.
Right, that explains something. It's okay, I'll come out where I was. I'll be, yeah, I can carry on, I'm on the speaker.
Sure, great. You just preempted me, I was going to say, but it is your, obviously, if you can put yourself on camera for the public and that would be great. So let me just start by saying that I am the new Chair of this review panel, so I'd like to put on record our thanks and my thanks to the previous Chair, the Connoisseur of St Martin for her work leading this panel in this important review work. We are picking up, obviously because of the whole situation we've been through in the few months, there has been work already done on this. We are very close to releasing into report, that will still go ahead. And obviously, as the first line of questioning will obviously reveal, we are very aware of where we are. It is my intention to pick up that and coming in afresh to understand about the whole concept of One Gov for the public through the scrutiny process of where we are and where we're heading. In that mind, we do have only an hour and as you could possibly imagine, we've got a lot of questions which have backlog from pre-COVID. So if you're in agreement, Chief Minister, we will finish at three, but if we can do another hour at a time our diaries allow, we can pick up the questions that we wish to continue with. Is that all right?
Yes, that's. Absolutely fine.
Great, and we'll agree that between offers. So bearing in mind, and not to go all previous ex-job-of-mine on everybody, but I will be very, very tight on timing. We have only got an hour, so if you could please keep your answers as short as possible and don't take offence if I interrupt you. All that's missing is a microphone and a red light behind me because it's going to be a bit like that. So off we go. Chief Minister, COVID-19, so what has been the impact of COVID-19 and the pandemic on the One Gov programme to date?
I think I'll turn it slightly the other way around in terms of, obviously with the restructuring that was going through within the organisation, that's later on we get on target operating models and things like that. I would say that the structuring that was taking place has had, was hugely beneficial in how we as an organisation have dealt with and continue to deal with COVID. Because if you remember, it was about dealing with the culture of the organisation, breaking down the silos, about people being risk averse and about a speed of decision-making. And if you, I think if you actually look back and look at the facts in terms of where we've been for the last, since February and March, and even from as members, and also I'll hand it very briefly to Charlie etc., if you want to give some more detail, if you look at just what we've seen as members, in something like whatever it is now, 18 weeks, we've had 40 pieces of legislation done. We've put co-funding packages in place, stuff that would have taken months usually, if not longer, has been put in place in weeks. So the speed, the flexibility of the organisation, some of the tech stuff that we have actually done, which no doubt John Quinn will talk about, which is, you know, even for us, the fact we're meeting virtually through Teams that roll out of Office 365 before Christmas, has all put us in a very good space. Now, obviously, some impacts have been from COVID, you know, you'll have seen business as usual, to an extent got put on hold in certain, in certain areas. Some services continued but being supplied in different ways, CLS would be an example. And obviously, we're starting to go back to BAU now, but the flexibility that's come out of the restructuring, I think, and I really say it genuinely, full credit to everyone in the team that has been putting that in place. We've been, it's a credit for everyone in there. Do you want me to hand over to Chief Executive, or is that long enough for you?
No, that's good. So that's all very positive and I'm sure we'll get into more of that in detail. So let's hear about the other things now. What has been highlighted, because in a crisis, you can't escape it, it exposes everything, the good and the bad. So let's be also honest and say what's been identified during the process as hindrance or things that need a relook?
Well, for example, it's not so much, I don't know if I'd call this a negative. Things like Team Jersey obviously were effectively re-profiled instead of doing the piece of work that they were meant to be doing, and Andy Bell's here and can talk to that, we sort of repurposed them to then go into the sort of staff welding areas. So there have been impacts, it was on business as usual, but it's been changed to doing something positive as well. Perhaps, as I said, Charlie or Catherine might want to add to that. Charlie?
So I think it would be fair to say that quite a lot of BAU business has had to be either deferred or in some cases stopped. And that obviously does affect some islanders' lives and businesses. Capital Programme, we've obviously had slippage because inevitably we haven't been able to commit and complete activities which have been impacted by COVID, albeit that the Capital Programme has been repurposed, which will form part of the fiscal stimulation programme. I'm being told you can't see me, but I'm.
You're in a black hole, so make of that what you were, oh, you are, you've suddenly appeared.
Sorry, I beg your pardon, the camera wasn't on, I beg your pardon. The, there's been some slippage in key projects, so the new hospital project, for example, albeit that we've kept it going, but we haven't been able to bring forward some of the original timetable, but that's been repurposed. Clearly, some policy legislation that was identified in the government plan inevitably has had to be reprioritised. Again, we will be doing that in a revamped government plan. And there has been some impact on one or two areas around organisational activity that we were on with. So you'll recall, we had the changes to the GHE structure, which have, ironically, we now have a plan because it's been to the Council of Ministers for the way forward and that is about to be again rolled out. So there are areas where we have had to either re-profile and/or recalibrate activity which has been impacted. Whether it's about not saying what's gone so well, I think as the Chief Minister said, that's probably the wrong language, it's what have we not necessarily been able to prioritise, I think is the better way of looking at it.
And Kevin, if that helps.
Yep, so moving on, what, the biggest impact we're all facing obviously is the impact on people and jobs. And obviously, as the largest employer in the island, how has the pandemic and the new way of working affected One Gov and also to aid the protection of jobs and helping the staff through this next process and also the economic recovery that we are all very much aware of?
Okay, there's quite a lot within that, so I'll do, try and do a very quick overview and then Mark Grimley from HR can pick some of that up in terms of how they've been helping staff. In terms of managing staff during the whole crisis, and there's obviously concerns around that, that's about the mental health side, I referenced that previously, Andy Bell, Team Jersey etc. In terms of within all that loss, obviously, we've had more absenteeism, that's been brought very, very regularly in reporting terms to ministers, competent authorities etc. And that's been managed quite effectively by Mark and his team, he can give you the absolute details on that. And obviously, things in the last few weeks have obviously been significantly improving. In terms of the support to the wider economy, I won't go into, you know, hopefully all the size of the packages we've been putting out there. And what we're now addressing, there'll be a State Members Briefing tomorrow on the next steps, which are the fiscal stimulus measures. The co-funding scheme is due to finish at the moment at the end of August and we're looking at whether we, effectively what we do about that. And that, for example, might be about tapering it rather than making sure there's not a cliff edge or just assessing what we also need to do. But there are more fiscal stimulus measures coming through, announcements to various state members first and then publicly in the afternoon. I mean, just as a complete aside, I actually bumped into a business owner yesterday and he was just basically saying how grateful he was to government because he effectively said, without you, he's talking to me, I wouldn't be here. And that actually was quite a heart-wrenching moment, if you like, because it did bring home that everything we've been doing and the direct impact beneficial actually to islanders that it has had. But going back to the organisation, if I hand it to Mark and he can give you some more than.
Chair, as you imagine, we've got a workforce of around 7,000 staff. The resilience of the workforce and their response to this has generally been amazing. In the first few weeks where there was very little known, there was a lot of information coming out at short space of time, we managed to collect data from nearly 90% of our staff so we can communicate with them at home. We've got, we had to reconfigure our health services and our green light services. We worked across the wider state entities to get support from airports of Jersey, for example, for security for portering in the hospital. We also had teams stand up, including special resourcing teams, so we were able to get an extra 200 healthcare assistants on standby should we need the nightingale. Alongside this, we had a lot of work to do around informing and educating our staff, not just about COVID but also about the impact of working at home. We were very conscious that there were a lot of people who had children at home and it's very, very difficult to work from home along with having children and on occasional calls of the dog barking. So we put in place a lot around wellbeing. We had a Team Jersey, the We Are Team Jersey programme that focused on the wellbeing of staff, but we also had guidance and updates to managers and staff on a weekly basis, sometimes on a daily basis, and we monitored the workforce every single day. So we were able to see if there were issues coming up.
That's really good to know, but I'm now looking at the forward picture. Now we come out and we're in this new, we're out of the main impact of COVID, you're readjusting, taking your example of bringing in all those healthcare assistants, but what happens to the workforce now? As the Chief Minister's alluded to, we're looking at the fiscal and the recovery of the economy, decisions will be made. So are we looking at generating further reductions in budget, reducing the workforce? Can you give us any insight at this stage, what the impact of COVID will be on that for me?
I think that's probably one for Chief Executive first and then Mark can pick up afterwards.
Sure, yeah.
So inevitably, we are looking to bring people back into work in the normal arrangements to support business as usual. So increasingly, we said over June, the latter part of June and throughout July, gradually we've started to get people who were on secondment or working in different teams or actually where we had state-owned entity staff seconded back into government. All of those arrangements untangled in order to be able to focus on the normal day-to-day business. But notwithstanding that, we've obviously stood up and maintained a COVID response. So COVID is not going to go away, all the work we're doing over test and track, all the work that we're doing around ensuring that the economic activity is maintained, all those arrangements are still there, but we have then started to supplement some of the areas where we know that we are focusing on some core activities. So economic recovery is one, some of the work that we're doing about Brexit, which has been going on in the background, the emphasis on trade negotiations is another, and then we're dealing with some of the fiscal stimulus work. So how and in what way are we looking at various aspects of the government's investment programme? So that would include people from CLS or Treasury who've been focused and dealing with that. In terms of numbers, the government plan will be worked up and developed over the next few weeks. That will tell us what the fiscal position is going forward for 21 to 24. On the back of that, the Council of Ministers will have to make some decisions, of which then the balance between how we meet our fiscal obligations will be determined. And whether that includes changes in public expenditure and what that might mean for staffing levels, I think will be a matter for those discussions. The final thing that I would say is that we are obviously learning the lessons from COVID, so we have a lot of staff who are still going to be working remotely because we believe that's actually worked to our collective advantage, including some of those staff. So we expect about 60% of colleagues that will be working two days a week from home, which has an impact on the way in which we obviously will be looking to both support them. So we're doing a lot of assessments to ensure that they've got the right kit and the right facilities, as well as work that we're doing to get people back into the office and get the office working in a way that meets the post-COVID requirements around social distancing, hygiene factors, etc. I think on the back of that, we obviously, going back to your original question about devolved responsibility and keeping people informed and all of that. So we've had a big session this morning, a virtual 240 senior managers event, which we've been talking about, some of the lessons learned, the experiences that people have had during COVID, where we've had presentations from different teams who've been involved in activity on behalf of the government. So we've spent a lot of time communicating with staff during the period. I've visited key areas where we've obviously had frontline activity, such as in the health and community services space and others as well. So I think we've spent a lot of time with colleagues, investing in colleagues, ready for some of that to come forward in the next phase, but also learning the lessons from that.
Of course. And Chief Minister, picking up on all of that, where are you with the priorities then when considering both the savings and the maintenance of public services when you're going to be making those decisions? And where would you be seeking the advice when doing that as you and the council ministers?
Right, so overall, as I've said publicly previously, whilst, and it remains the same today, that everything is still on the table and nothing is awful, I've made no guarantees whatsoever. Certainly, my personal preference is that we do as much as we can to maintain frontline services, that's got to be the case. And we know, you know, if you go back to the pre-COVID situation, to what we had in the government plan previously, things like, you know, improvements and getting more social workers in and all those type of areas, we still want to make sure we do because those inherent problems are, were still there and we still need to fix. I think what we will probably have to be doing is looking at what are the really top strategic priorities and making sure we deliver on those. It may be that there are some less critical, much more marginal issues that we may have to just re-profile or reprioritise. That's kind of the decisions we're taking, it's got to be looking at, it will ultimately be in the hands of the members. We need to understand the overall financial envelope first, those components are coming together. We've taken or are, or in the process of lodging some various bits, the prior currently taxation side is one element that helps address some of the financial pressures that we're looking at, as well as assisting members of the public as well. So it's a little bit too early to say, but that's the principles behind it. But be under no illusion, we have some really big financial challenges ahead. I'm absolutely confident we have the ability to do it because in fact, as has been alluded to by the members as well, in fact for many years, we have got fantastic levels of reserves, we're in a really good place compared to an awful lot of other jurisdictions. Therefore, we have choices and we have options in front of us that gives us the tools to do the job.
Okay, and then moving on, my last question before I hand to Senator Moore. Will there be an extension of your portfolios? And I ask this of you, Chief Minister, and the Chief Executive as well. Some of these issues and the big things you're talking about, how do you see your roles changing and your briefs developing over the next few months? And how can we expect the dynamics of your roles to change? And on that, how can you today give reassurance to a very nervous workforce who are all seeing what's happening with the jobs, who are all seeing with the slow impact of COVID? So how's your role going to change and how can you deliver that reassurance to the members of your workforce?
In terms of roles and responsibilities, I don't think there'll be significant change. There may be different issues that come under us as we go through and we look at, from the strategic level, re-profiling of things and what have you, but the actual roles and responsibilities won't change, I don't believe. In terms of giving confidence to the workforce, interestingly enough, through the whole COVID crisis, what's been absolutely brilliant to see has been how people have acted a lot differently actually, to our suspect where we would have been in the past. I know perhaps, as John Quinn can talk about what his experience has been, for example, under the Tom and the restructuring under M&amp;D, but you've seen people being, taking greater risks, acting at pace, being flexible, doing different things. That's been really good, we need to try and capture that and continue that. In terms of job security and.
Yeah, you did say that earlier as well, but I'm saying is all that goodwill, all that reassurance, on the other hand is, we all see what's happening with the big choices you're making. So when people hear that, they think, is my job safe? Is the restructuring, the government mean that the possibility is in this change and these big changes? That's what I'm talking about in the restructuring, because all that goodwill is there, but on the other hand, in real terms, people are nervous. So how can you address the both and what would you say to that as well?
I think what we've got to keep saying is that certainly priorities have got to be around maintaining frontline services, all those things and all the good things we want to do. We do know, as was in the past, that we have an aging demographic within the organisation, which, if you like, assists, that's the wrong expression in there, but that's around, that gives us an opportunity as people retire, what do you do? Do you look at those roles, do you look at re-profiling? We have still quite a reasonable level of vacancies, so that's about vacancy management. So there's all those tools in the box, which actually is what we need to tap into, that's the big way of achieving some changes. There will be others, I'm sure, but let's deal with that. And until we've got that financial envelope nailed down and some understanding about other actions one could take, that's probably about as far as we can go at this stage. Charlie, do you want to add?
So I think members will realise that when we discussed the government plan last year, we talked about having to create efficiencies and there was the whole raft of questions, Deputy, which you have just asked, which were asked last year. And we were very clear about the fact that there was quite a set of different ways in which you could look at the whole issue of efficiencies. So there's no doubt that in some instances, there will be some job casualties, but if you recall, we've made it very clear that they are relatively small for the reasons that the Chief Ministers just rehearsed. So we had a lot of vacancies, we had a lot of posts that were not filled on a permanent basis, and we also were dealing with a range of non-frontline work where we were looking later on for some big savings to occur through automation, etc. All of that still stands. We still have to deliver the numbers that were in the government plan, which is around about £100 million. Clearly, moving forward, we will have to understand what the impact is for the overall public expenditure figures, as to whether we have to change those estimates going forward into 2024 and beyond. If not, because the numbers are so big, there will be other fiscal measures that we have to consider. It won't all be about headcount, which is where I think your question was aimed at. But saying that, we also have to have an honest conversation with staff and we've been upfront throughout this whole process, that our priority is to try and ensure that frontline outward-facing services are maintained, but we would look for efficiencies in back office. We would look to do some of the things much more effectively across the whole of the public services. And we are continuing that drive and I think what's happened in a post-COVID environment, that there will be an incentive to drive some of those more quickly than was originally envisaged and much more broadly. So by way of example, customers, we still have pockets of activity that's sat in different departments for customer services. We can bring that together and we have got some revised plans about that. And we believe that that is actually what the island would want to see of the use of public money. So prioritise frontline, but don't also add to the back office costs.
Can I just summarise, Kevin?
Deputy Morrell will pick up on that and he has a question, so Deputy Morrell.
Yes, it's just to ask, how much has been saved from the restructuring tiers one, tier two, and separately tiers three and tier four? What savings have been made so far?
Charlie, do you want to give the details?
I think we gave those numbers previously, we can come back, I genuinely don't have them to hand, but I can get those for you.
Because the point I would take, Catherine, actually, it ties into what I was going to say, Deputy Morrell, even to summarise. A lot of the target operator model changes was about getting the organisation to the right place, is what I was saying earlier about changing the culture, changing the silos, being flexible. And so it isn't, although there's a driver about making sure it's not more expensive and does save something, it's not the principal driver behind it. But overall, and the summary point I was going to make, whatever happens, we've got to have an organisation that's modern and delivers services that's the 21st century. That's got to be our overriding priority and that's always going to be the objective all the way going through. I will just point out as well, I know you've made reference to a nervous workforce, it does depend on perspective and how you back up that comment, but from an evidence point of view, but the general perception we've got at the moment is that morale has actually got better over the last, certainly during the course of this year, oddly enough, but possibly because also everybody's come together as a team in delivering everything that has been delivered during a crisis.
Deputy Morrell, do you want to have a quick follow-up before?
Yeah, very quickly, because I appreciate it is Senator Moore's time. I just wanted to quickly ask, going back to that question that was asked earlier on about the kind of negatives that you've spotted, that you've identified. One of the negatives that have been identified to me was that the organisation, whilst it tried to reach out to external advisers in terms of the Jersey public in dealing with the crisis, the feedback I've had from many people who perhaps got involved early on, but then the organisation seemed to close down and people saying that actually the organisation is not very good at taking information in from the outside or taking advice from the outside. And I was wondering, as you weren't able to identify any real negatives, I was wondering how you'd respond to that one as a negative.
I'm not totally sure when you say about where that's come from. So by way of example, our community support package in the work that we had for Connect Me was incredibly well received and we took on board lots of ideas and experiences from islanders who were involved in that. They helped shape that and indeed we took secondments, as you will know, from the third sector and voluntary organisations to support that. So we had an incredibly good set of discussions with parishes and with representatives from a vast number of organisations and islanders on that. If you're talking about though, if you're talking about.
I'll let you know what I'm talking about, if you want.
So if you are, if you were going to reference some of. No, but if you are, if you were going to reference some of, for example, we had some of the military, former military people on Ireland who came to us and offered advice. If it's something like that, we spent a huge amount of time talking and listening to some of their ideas, many of which we went through and where it was appropriate, we worked with them. But where it wasn't appropriate, we declined their kind offers and made suggestions about why it would be better. And we did do that. But if that's, if that's the area where some of that advice came in, because we had a lot of, we had a lot of advice, but not necessarily all of it was perhaps quite as it might have been played out to third parties when we got down to the deeper end. I don't think we ever shut our doors. We had lots of meetings with people. But there was some disagreements about strategy and way forward, which ultimately I think we probably took the right decisions. Albeit, on some occasions, we also took their advice and acted on their advice. So I think it was a two-way situation. So it wasn't all of us going in on our, into our sort of bunkers and not listening to their advice. But there were some agreements and some disagreements.
There's also people in the business community felt that they were kept at arms length.
Well, I genuinely don't know who they are. We involved many representatives from the business community at the beginning for the preparation for the early co-payroll scheme. We talked to the business community around some of the work that should be done to extend that in the areas where we particularly needed to go. And there was a lot of dialogue. And we have subsequently involved representatives from the business community in the fiscal stimulus package that will be announced tomorrow. And are involving them in other forums where the economic recovery is being engaged in. Genuinely, there will always be some people who feel that their voice has not been heard in a crisis. Actually, one of the things that you have to do in a crisis is lead people and get on with it. And sometimes you can't be as inclusive as you would ideally like in normal, in normal circumstances.
Okay, thanks both. Yes, let's get back on track with OneGov. Senator Moore's got questions around the target operating models. Senator.
Thank you, yes. Nervousness was mentioned earlier and that nervousness largely came from the incomplete nature of the target operating models and concerns from people in the workforce who did not know what, how their job would be moved around, whether they would be put on to a lower level of pay, et cetera. That process was running behind pre-Covid. Could you please update us as to where it is and when the target operating process is now anticipated to be complete?
Yes, thank you. That, I think best of the update is.
The Chief Executive because it's more of an implementation.
Yep, exactly. Or the Head of HR, yes.
So I will ask Mark to come in with some of the fine detail, Senator. Can I just say though?
We only have 25 minutes left, so if you could be quite brief. It's quite a high level question initially.
Yeah, so the first thing I would say is that most of the restructuring that took place in the target operating models at tiers one and two were completed before the Covid pandemic started. There were two main areas, GHE and JHA, where there were changes, partly through, in one case, the assembly decision and partly through some second opinions around regulation and ministerial on GHE. And we'll come back to those in a minute.
In relation to, if I could just be really clear, all of the tiers. And I'm particularly aware that tiers three and four were not complete when we arrived at March this year.
So I was about to say, so the other two areas where three and four was affected most particularly was children's, young people, education and skills and the work that was started and continues to go through in HCS, where there were clearly impacts that came about through Covid, where it was felt not appropriate to continue that. So we suspended at the beginning of Covid all further discussions around target operating model arrangements that were impacting on frontline staff, in particular in three, four and five. And then we've restarted those, but Mark can come in with the fine detail.
Just to put into context, because I think there are some myths out there around the numbers of people affected and what that means then. If you think about the target operating models in both health and children's services, the clinical workforce and education workforce aren't included. Now, they're about 40% of the government's total workforce. We've concluded the Treasury and Exchequer, the CLS ones. The Chief Operating Officer, the Modernisation in Digital has continued through Covid. Commercial has continued and people in corporate services finishes for them. So we are a long way with the central services. It's just those two big departments that the Chief Executive mentioned.
But the Chief Executive was talking about tiers three and four in those departments. Of course, there's still five and six to go after that as well. So my main question was, when will the whole process be complete?
I can't give you the exact timelines because the Council of Ministers have just recently agreed the new framework for GHE. We will have to go out and complete that. We've got also the economic activity that was split out of GHE, which is currently in the OCE. So I would like to think we may well have some of the key principles of all of that completed by the back end of the year. But I just genuinely at the moment do not know what the timeline for that would be because that has only just been approved through the Council of Ministers. I do expect the majority of the other areas to be completed. So we know that the JHA consultation has been reactivated, that should see us through. The HCS is being reactivated and will see us through. And we know, as Mark has said, that four other departments, that's S triple P, CLS, the COO and the, just trying to remember, the Office of the Chief Executive minus the economic activities, all being completed. Now, if I'm being honest, we just have to go through those consultation programmes in the right way and we will have some time lag on that. But at the end of the day, the other configuration that we will potentially have to consider, which goes back to Deputy Pamplin's question, which is if there are some changes made through the government plan for reasons that we just rehearsed and has any impact on target operating models, we will then have to do some further work around consultation on Toms potentially. But that at this moment in time hasn't been finalised, so I can't give you a view on that. And until the government plan is complete, I won't know the potential implications of that, if any, for any further target operating model changes.
Isn't it?
Okay, so could I just be reminded who has ultimate responsibility for the delivery of this project, please?
From a officer point of view?
Yes.
Well, of course, the OneGov initiative is something that I have been driving as Chief Executive. But different aspects of the project have different SROs, as we have been through with you before. And a lot of those have been identified in previous sittings and we've given you all that information.
But you accept that your role is not simply driving a project, it is the ultimate responsibility for it?
Of course, as Chief Executive, I have ultimate responsibility for an awful lot of things, some of which won't be directly done by myself and some will be, yes. But in the circumstances, some of these things obviously are not in my control. So the decision by the assembly, by way of example, I could not influence. That decision was taken and therefore it changes some of the timelines. The decision taken by politicians in whatever position obviously impacts on some of the timelines. Those are not matters that are within my control.
Okay, so how is the, is there a formal framework that tracks the progress of this project?
Yes, there is, which links also to the OneGov Political Oversight Group, which works on behalf of the Council of Ministers. And then there are a range of different, because if you remember, we've talked about a range of initiatives. There's no single programme. That's a key point that we've reiterated many times. There are a number of initiatives which have boards which are attached to them that feed into it. So whether that's the office.
They're interrelated, but go on.
So there are different SROs that will lead different aspects of the modernisation of public services. So if you're talking about, I don't know, the office project, there is separate set of arrangements. If there's the hospital, if there's work around the Jersey care model, all of these contribute to the modernisation of public services. And it goes back to the Chief Minister's earlier point. This is all not about just organisational change. This is also about a whole series of modernising initiatives. So if we take which Chief Operating Officer is involved in, all the technology modernisation arrangements, then those are in turn driven by a set of governance which have project boards, political oversight, and they feed into the development of the overall programme that is potentially either in the government plan for modernising public services.
Okay, so have those project boards, et cetera, set key performance indicators for the project?
All have timelines, performance related activity to them. And we provided previously all the documentation around most of the initiatives that you've asked for specific details on where appropriate.
Not sure if it's me or you who has just.
I've finished my answer.
Right, okay. There was a glitch in the line. Thank you. So who is in charge of assessing the progress and the success of the target operating model?
Not sure I understand the question.
If you've set key performance indicators, I didn't quite hear all of your previous answers, I apologise.
Right, so.
Who is their achievement?
So there are different, there are different arrangements for the various initiatives, all of which funnel into an overall modernisation agenda. So to give you an example, there is a very clear set of milestones, objectives and performance where appropriate for different projects. If by way of example, we're talking about the office, we have a timeline, we have deadlines. You know those through the work that we've been doing with scrutiny. There is a political oversight group that monitors that and that then forms part of a decision-making process that goes through Council of Ministers. If you're talking about something which is less about projects and more about people, so there's Team Jersey by way of example. There's Team Jersey Board that meets regularly, that oversees the arrangements for whether Team Jersey is meeting its key targets. And we again, I think, have reported to scrutiny on that, which is linked back to the original contract. If we're talking about some of the customer services arrangements, we have a customer services board that looks at the performance around where we're trying to make improvements, for example, on the way in which and how quickly we respond and what some of those milestones are at. And we have a performance framework that sits within every departmental delivery plan which people are judged on. So there is a golden thread that runs from the government plan right the way down into individual departmental performance plan and further down then into the appraisals of individual key members of staff.
Thank you. We are just trying to understand the implementation of the actual framework. At the moment, are we still working to the original framework, albeit there have been a couple of changes at the top of GHE, as you mentioned earlier? Or have we moved to an official target operating model version two?
So the target operating model is what it has been. There have been some changes which we've just discussed. That's not changed. We don't have more departments. We don't, we have changed some of the more thematic areas of work. I used customer earlier, where we had some people who kept customer services within their own portfolios. That's changed. ITS is another area where we had some departments, most notably education and health, where we had some of that activity while we got the modernisation together. So apart from functions being consolidated, the overall framework hasn't changed.
Okay, thank you. Is there currently a recruitment freeze?
I think we've discussed this before. You asked the question in scrutiny. We haven't got a formal freeze, but we have a panel which looks at all recruitment that goes on. You wouldn't freeze social workers, teachers or nursing staff by way of example. What you would look at is ensuring that you're not spending lots of money on back office and admin staff if you can make efficiencies in the way that I described earlier. So it's not a freeze, but there is a expectation that you should not be going out and recruiting staff unnecessarily, apart from in key frontline workers, which is where, as I think the Chief Minister said, the political priorities are.
Thank you. And just if I could quickly go back to the nervousness point that was made earlier, how are the wellbeing, how is the wellbeing of staff being monitored?
So I think we just heard earlier from Mark that we have been doing a huge amount throughout the whole of the Covid period in which we've had regular communication with staff and we've been getting a huge amount of feedback about how people are. I, that's going to be followed up. End of the month, we have the staff survey that you will recall we do every two years. That will give us another indication about what the temperature of the organisation is at the moment. When we talk about nervousness, I think that was in relation to the fact that there's bound to be nervousness. It wasn't our term, I think it was the chairman's term for the session today. I think staff are in a reasonably good place at the moment. The nervousness is about the fact that, you know, you've got some people coming back to work who've not been in the office for many months. You've got some people who've got health issues, who we've been supporting over these last few months. And you've got some people who've had to make some big adjustments, you know, homeschooling and working and how and in what way we support them, all of which we've been dealing with. We're very acutely aware that we have a lot of very tired staff that we need to support. And we have been making it clear that they need to take their leave and we are making sure that managers understand all of those things. I said today, we had the top 250 managers on a virtual arrangement which talked about some of the things that we've got to do to ensure that we maintain our support for staff. So I think over this last period, we really have spent an awful lot of time working with colleagues to determine how they're feeling, what the temperature is of the organisation. And I think we're in a reasonable place actually, considering we've just, what we've just come through.
Thank you. I'll hand back to the Chair.
Thank you, Senator. We are mindful for Chair, but we all want to hear from Senator Ward. So Senator Ward, I've just promoted you. Deputy, over to you.
Yes, thanks very much. These are really questions for Team Jersey and I'm aware of time, so I'll try and merge a few together. What measurable successes have they been encountering? The findings of the, of bullying and harassment issues raised in the HR Lounge Report? And when are the HR Lounge coming back for their review, their follow-up review of the state's Jersey workforce?
I think we'll do that to Mark first and then go to Andy from Team Jersey. Mark?
Thanks, Jess. So I won't repeat a lot of the responses that the Chief Minister and the Vice Minister have given in the State Assembly. They're well documented. In terms of the question about the HR Lounge, they have returned this week. They are undertaking a very similar methodology to before. They're looking at the recommendations that they've made and the effectiveness of our work in that. They've started their fieldwork this week. I expect them to finish in four weeks' time. They will be working with staff, they'll be using focus groups, they'll meet the senior managers and the trade union representations. They're also doing audits of bullying and harassment cases that have come up over the past year since their report.
Okay. And measurables, okay, we'll leave it at that actually. In terms of Team Jersey, what have they been active in through the Covid crisis?
Andy, do you want to address that?
Hold on a minute. Sorry, Rob. As I think Chief Minister already mentioned, we have spent the last three and a half months supporting individual managers through a coaching programme that we put in place. We have also been spending our time providing guidance and assistance to those managers who are leading remotely in quite challenging circumstances. We have been spending our time looking at how we can respond to potentially needing to move some of the learning in the programme online. So we've drawn forward quite a lot of the design work that we were anticipating to do later in the year, earlier in the year. But I think the primary focus for Team Jersey throughout the last three months has been to support those managers who are leading the. has been to support those managers who are leading the COVID response. And we've been doing that through a very intensive coaching programme, supporting somewhere around 50 to 60 managers who are leading teams and facing some significant challenges they've never faced before.
So has your whole team been active for that time? Or have you had to furlough any staff or have they been paid as normal?
Jersey staff in regards to TDP, Jersey, no, we haven't furloughed anybody. We have all been active. We actually succumbed to one of our members of staff to lead the emergency resourcing team. So one of those members of staff has spent the last three months looking at how we can support and lead the emergency resourcing team across the island. So no, we've had a fairly intensive three months actually, supporting, support for five months, supporting folk in terms of how we can get folk through the crisis.
And will there be another Team Jersey report? And if so, when can we expect that one?
We're currently looking at which elements of the programme may well need to be extended, because we've obviously lost somewhere the reason of five months where we have not been able to engage fully with staff within the public service. I think those decisions will start to be looked at and we will come back to you in terms of when we will start to close down the programme and start to look at how we can report on the success of the programme.
And will that require an extension of the contract in light of COVID-19?
I'm not aware of that at the moment. We haven't had those discussions yet. I would imagine that we would love to see the, the current contract will need to be extended in regards to simply the timeline. We can't do the things that we said we're going to do in the period that we have left, because we've lost effectively four, five months of our delivery.
Okay, but could that mean additional costs to things such as the suspension of the Team Jersey development in Sipes? That couldn't happen obviously because of the way things were happening.
We have already started again discussing with Sipes how we can support Sipes in the recovery phase. Sipes is an intro particularly in children's service, which is where we've spent a fair amount of our time and energy. We think that the pressure will come at various times across public service. And clearly, as we come out of lockdown, some of the pressures on things like children's service and adult mental health is another example. We will see there will be a need for some targeted focused support in those areas.
Okay, I think what I'll do, Chair, if you don't mind, I'll cut short those questions so that Deputy Ayer has a chance to ask a couple of things and perhaps we can follow those up later, because I think it's a natural break point. I don't know if you agree with that?
Yeah, I think so. I'm mindful of, again, we've got five minutes to go and we did agree we will find another hour to dig in more of the questions than when we have remaining. But let's give Deputy Ayer the chance to ask and kick things off to Deputy, if you want.
Thank you, Chair. Concerning the CEO's appraisal, Chief Minister, have the six strategic objectives for the chief executive identified in 2018 changed in any way?
Sorry, just unmuting the camera. I was going to say that's not one I've gone and appraised myself on very recently, but from memory for 2019, we've certainly kept the six. I'm trying to recall if we added one more in. And I'll just come back to you in a sec. I think probably Mark Grimley can assist me on that. But essentially, they have not changed. We have not taken any away. And the appraisal process is also carrying on and we are expecting something by the end of the month.
And of those objectives, which key targets has the CEO achieved and which have not yet been achieved?
Yep.
So Deputy, the appraisal process is currently underway. Chief Minister has engaged an external facilitator, as we did last time. His report is due at the end of July.
And which is, yeah. So if these achievements are not, the objectives are not achieved, would you consider extending the CEO's contract to complete his work?
As I said, what I'm, sorry, I'm looking at the chair's reaction on that COVID. What, the case, where I am is I'm waiting for the report to come through. I've been exceptionally pressed with how the team has delivered, everything it has delivered during the COVID crisis. And I think that's what we will take into account as part of that appraisal process. But as I said, I'm waiting for the report. The part of that process is that a list of people, which includes some assembly members, it also includes some members of the organisation. It also includes some external islanders, all feed into that process. And that process has been going on even, well, during the last few months. Obviously, slight delay, well, obviously a delay because of COVID. But as I said, expecting a report around the end of this month and I'll comment on it then when I get it.
Thanks. It could be said that there have been mixed reviews of the OneGov initiatives from the general public, the public sector and politically. Why do you believe this is the case? Do you think they're not well informed?
Sorry, Deputy, could you just repeat the question? It just broke up slightly.
Okay, it could be said that there have been mixed reviews of the OneGov initiatives from the general public, the public sector and politically. Why do you believe this is the case? Is it a lack of communication?
I think you'd probably need to be a bit more specific about what you're suggesting. The mixed reviews, I've said this, I think, last, I'm going to say last year, at some point, and I would have suspected in front of one of the scrutiny panels and possibly this one. If you're going through organisational change, people, there will be some people who are unhappy with that process, whether because they don't like change, whether because that change is directly affecting them or for all sorts of other reasons. What you've got to look at, as far as I'm concerned, is what the objectives at the very beginning were, what I certainly stood on and others stood on, which is around organisational change, about changing the culture, breaking down the silos and delivering an organisation that's fit for the 21st century. And provided that is the case, and obviously when you're in the middle of an organisational change, we said it was going to take quite a long time over there of this process. And obviously, COVID wasn't built into that timeframe. It's only when you get to probably, well, actually, I was going to say two-thirds of the way through onwards, you'll really see the major benefits of that change coming through and how it's been working. Now, a reason I paused is when I, what I will say, as I said at the very beginning of this hearing, is for all the changes and structures that have been referred to, I know we've not had John Quinn on here, but in terms of modernisation in digital, he's of the view that his department would not have been able to do what is actually done in delivering the technology to date that has kept all the services, including the assembly and the virtual meetings, going without the restructuring that took place. In other words, what was in place previously probably wouldn't have coped with the changes that that department had to do and deal with over the last four, five months. So in terms of, yes, there will be people who are concerned about individual matters, but you look at the strategic level, I think the organisation and the changes are absolutely necessary. And in fact, if anything, I think COVID-19 has highlighted that.
Thank you, Chief Minister. Due to time constraints, I'll pass back to the Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy. We have reached the hour. Well done, everybody, for hitting an hour and getting to this stage. As agreed, we will return and if we can agree now to make that a priority of getting in our diaries, giving time constraints. Second observation, just for my first ever chairing of this, I found it informative, but I did note quite a lot of jargon that for me, I had to start looking up. And I don't know what members of the public, if they're watching this, would have got that. So just as a general observation, if we can maybe look at that the next time with me and just look at the abbreviations of wording. So if I had that trouble, I'm sure members of the public would as well. But an apologies to Senator Ferguson and Deputy Ralph for getting to their questions. But they'll be ready and raring to go when we come back to that. So on that point, Chief Minister, members of your team, fellow members of scrutiny and members of the public, that concludes this first hour of this hearing. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much to Deputy and to the rest of your team. Thank you.
Thank you.